I will open the meeting now, at 5:30 rather. This meeting is being taped by Area 58. If you would all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So I'll make a motion pursuant to General Law's Chapter 30A, Section 21a2, to go into executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Second, Mr. Nezarella?
Yes.
Mr. Sealy?
Yes.
I vote yes also. So we'll have a recess now, we'll be back in probably five or 10 minutes, and then we'll go on with the rest of the agenda. Thank you. Very first thing on our agenda tonight for appointments is with the Police Department, and I would like to ask the Police Chief to come forward, and we'll start the process.
Good evening, everyone. First of all, I'd like to thank the Board of Selectmen, Town Administrator Cody Haddad, for taking the time to place this on the agenda for the ceremony. I want to thank Deputy Benner and the rest of my staff for helping in getting this event together tonight. I'd also like to thank all the families and friends of the officers that will be recognized today, and thank the residents of Halifax for their continued support of our department. We're going to have photos at the end of this ceremony, in the back there where the two flags are posted right now. So the first thing on the agenda is I'd like to recognize Sergeant Patrick Sterling. Sergeant Sterling is to be recognized for his dedicated and exemplary service throughout town for 29 years. And we also want to congratulate him on his retirement, which was effective February 29th. Sergeant Sterling was a valued member of our department, and I'm glad that he will be around to help us when issues come up. That being said, I'd like to have a request from the Board to make a motion to appoint Sergeant Sterling as a special police officer.
I would like to do that, since I made the motion to appoint him as a special police officer 29 years ago, and then he managed to work his way up to sergeant and then retire, which is a marvelous thing, so I'm very happy to make that motion.
I would gladly second that one.
All right. Any discussion from the Board? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Tina Adams.
So next, I'd like to have Tina Olivera come up to be sworn as a police matron. Tina is a resident of Halifax, and we are very happy to have her join our team. Next, could I have Officer Cushman, Officer Stephen Raditz, Officer Daniel Shaheen, and Sergeant Michael Schleif come up with their official swamen and badge pinning? Just before Sue gives them their oath of office, I just want to say a few things about the officers. Officer Cushman began his career with the Halifax Police Department in April 2014. Throughout his career with the department, Officer Cushman has distinguished himself not only with his excellent police work, but with his dedicated service to the residents of Halifax. Officer Cushman became the Elder's Affairs Liaison Officer, and he has cultivated a great working relationship with the elders of this town. He has assisted this at-risk community group navigate difficult times with a calm and reassuring demeanor. He is also a certified field training officer, and has earned his bachelor's degree in law enforcement. Officers Stephen Raditz and Officer Shaheen both come with prior police experience. Officer Raditz with the Whitman Police Department, he resides in Hanson. Officer Shaheen with the Olean's PD and then the Simmons College Police Department, he resides in Pembroke. With these hirings, our department is now a full complement. We're very happy to have him onboard. Sergeant Michael Schleif began working with the department on September 2011. He is a firearms coordinator, TASER instructor, training officer, and a member of the Semleyk Motor Unit. He has a bachelor's degree in criminal justice, first-line supervision, can make or break a department, and I am very confident that Sergeant Schleif will be up for the task alongside Sergeant McDonald and Sergeant Caprio. Sue, please come up and give him the oath of office, please.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States, and to the Constitution of the Commonwealth of America. I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all duties incumbent on me, and state your position for the Town of Halifax. I will obey and be bound by the Central Government of the Halifax Police Department, so help me God, and state your name. Hereby accept the position of Sergeant for the Town of Halifax. Congratulations.
Thank you. Could I please have the family members come up to do the official penning, please? Thank you, everyone. So any family members, friends, that'd like to take pictures with the new officers and new sergeant can do so in the back where the flags are posted. Just keep the noise down a little bit, because I know the Board has some business to take care of, so we'll get the pictures done as quickly as possible so the Board can continue with their business. Thank you very much, everyone, for coming this evening.
We'll take a five-minute recess so that you can take photographs, and the Board would actually, each of us would like to come and congratulate the officers. Chief, you did another marvelous job. Deputy Chief, you did another marvelous job. You've brought to the town some marvelous talent, and some of these fellows have been with us for a while, and they are really, really excellent representatives of the Police Department. So congratulations to not only them, but to you also. Move along, and we can have the Parks and Recreation people coming up.
You don't have to go home, but you can't stay here.
We got, where's, oh, there you go. It's Tom. Okay. All right, so 6 o'clock is an appointment we have with the joint meeting with the Parks Commission. And do you want to tell us why you're here? We have a letter, but maybe you can just explain what it is you're trying to accomplish. Use the microphone, or use this one, one of the two. It's recorded, so everything's recorded by the Area 58, that's why we have the microphones. That one works too? Either one? Either one?
Whatever floats your boat.
Go ahead.
The Board has asked us to come to this meeting to discuss the beach summer program. I guess somebody was looking into parking fines on your side. On our side, we put out a memo that we voted on for as far as how to address parking stickers in the car, on the window from recycling. There's one style, the other one was a certificate that has been used by Pam in the Selectmen's Office for parking their resident taxpayer. A third one was a resident, a taxpayer, non-resident, for people that live out of town and they have property in town, and so there were three stickers. So we've added a fourth one for non-resident, non-Halifax taxpayer, limited to five to 10 cars. We came up with a fee of about $20, I believe Cody's working on that now, to run it through, make sure all the state and federal regulations are met for that purpose.
Okay.
We've also okayed a format for a parking attendant, and I guess that is now advertised on the town website for a parking attendant for the summer, for the weekends between Memorial Day and Labor Day, for weekends only, just to help make sure the people that are parking at the beach are legitimately supposed to be there, resident and non-resident, because I mean, recycling stickers, nobody really has been going down yet until now that the lake has been cleaned, now people are noticing, hey, you know, this is nice and clean, and we don't have bacteria running through it, so the beach is now starting to become a little more populated area. So that's kind of the monitoring side of it. So I don't know if how you guys have gotten with the parking fee, I don't know if the chief...
Chief's behind you there.
I don't know who's working on that, or increasing the fines for the parking for non-residents without a sticker or without a permit, so I don't know where that is. If you guys can tell me.
I met with Cody one time to ask, I'd like to ask the Board of Selectmen to increase the parking ticket. I forgot parking ticket. I think it's now $15. I'd like to increase it to $50. This way here, we're paying, they're going to be paying $20 to pack. It kind of gives them incentive to pay the $20 instead of the $50 parking ticket. And I understand that the Board of Selectmen, that goes through you, to raise that parking ticket, you know? That would be through the, I think that will be through about the whole year, so like for snow, I know parking on the street for snow removal and stuff, so you would be increasing the parking tickets for the whole town, the whole year, to $50. I'd like to seek.
So we were able to work with council, and you guys do have the jurisdiction to implement a fee, a reasonable fee, just for the beach or any of the parks in town that you have jurisdiction over? So if you vote that at a meeting, that's something that you have within your ability under Mass. General Law?
How about the second part of it? Well, let me ask you this. If you are going to have all these other types of stickers, how does somebody get one? Do they have to contact Parks Department?
I wrote up a list, may I start it over? Yes, I wrote up a list of permit, one, two, three, or four, four different styles of permits, and they're certificates. The office, Pam had a couple of them samples in there, and I put those in the packets I sent to Cody. I made up a third one, was for the non-resident, non-Halifax taxpayer, because a lot of people in Mass. do pay taxes. There is grant money that does come to the towns, to our towns, you know, we just received an earmark grant for fiscal '23, so I think that is a reasonable limit to parking, depending on when we get more performance down the beach by our own town residents attending it, and if we have a holiday, you have an event, or the Cub's Boy Scouts, so if somebody wants to have an event down there, at least we can police it a little better and understand who's down there at the given time. That's what the intent of the parking attendant is for during the weekends. During the weekdays, you know, I mean, during the summer, it's mostly the neighborhood families down there, and they just walk down there anyways.
Okay. No, my question was, if you sell, I know you can get one from the recycling center, but the other three categories, who's going to sell?
Selectmen's Office already does that. The parking attendant will have also those down there and be able to, okay, you know, here's your plate, here's your ID, there you go, here's your sticker, and then a town resident, that sticker, that certificate is good all year, from January 1st to December 31st. At this location, at the Route 36 boat launch, you're parking over there as well.
And the price of one of these stickers is the same as the recycling sticker?
Town doesn't, no residents pay anything for these.
No, not for the recycling?
Recycling, you get a recycling sticker for recycling in town, so that automatically clicks you right in, so you can park. Anyway, that was one of the exhibits I sent Cody, the exhibit of the parking ticket, the two certificates, the three different certificates that I, there's no fees, the only one that's would be a fee is a non-taxpayer, how did I put it again?
Non-resident?
Non-resident, non-town taxpayer.
Oh, I see.
That would be limited to five to 10 cars in the parking. I think it holds maybe 50. We're trying to set it up where you can go on the website, if you want to go down there for the day, you can maybe pay it on the website. Or we have receipt books down there, and we give you a temporary one day, so one-day pass certificate.
Okay. And those are $20?
We figured the fee $20. I mean, we walked around, we've been dwelling on this for a long time. We've been talking to a lot of people, residents, non-residents.
Other towns.
Other towns, so we've been beating this around since two years now. So I think this is probably the best thing, at least try to figure out a handle on it, to at least get a body down there and just try to get a handle on it as far as people going down there right at this moment. We have plans, we've had an engineer do some engineering, I just got the drawings the other day, to fix up the beach area within the wetlands. There's a wetlands application in, we have to meet with the wetlands to further it, we just got that information, all the crades, everything, to stop the washing. So we're working on sprucing it up. So we're going to get more people to go down there over the years, I think it's going to get very popular with the town residents, and we're going to see a lot of impact.
Okay. So you checked with Town Council, and the Parks Commission can vote on the sticker issue, right? So we don't have to handle that?
They can actually handle both. They can vote on the sticker, the permits, the fees for the different stickers, and also for the parking fee or violation for...
Is it part of the parking violation itself?
You can't. That's what council would advise us.
What he was talking about was parking tickets in general.
Yeah, like if you're parking, the police officers pull a car over?
Like if there's a car parked on the side of the road, I'm talking about, like a regular parking ticket?
Oh, town-wide?
Yeah, town-wide, you know, increase that fee to $20.
So that would go beyond the Parks Commission?
Yes, that's what I'm saying, that would go beyond us, I think there'd be more with the Board of Selectmen.
I can check with council on the process of that. The only thing I check with them on is the park itself, what the process of that would be, the violation.
Yeah, that way, yeah, this way here, it's more than incentive to pay the $20 when you're down there for the day, instead of, you know, because right now, the parking ticket, if you're parked on the side of the road or whatever, is $15. So we'd like to have you, the Board, look at it and consider it to be brought up to $50.
Okay, all right. So we don't need to do anything here tonight, we're just, you're filling us in. But we will check on changing our parking ticket amount.
Ticket system, yes.
Townwide, and we'll talk with the Police Department, and I think the town clerk is the one who reinforces that, or we have a, there used to be a parking person that used to do. We don't issue that many of them, so.
No, no.
The transmit, right, yeah, okay, I was close. Next office over.
I like we have a volunteer.
So we'll check into those before our next meeting on the townwide parking ticket, but I doubt we've issued very many parking tickets.
And I think one of the other things that's going to be great, the Chief Chabot, if I get that ready, is he going to...
You gotta wait.
All right, thank God. Thank you, Lord. He's been touched with a neighboring town, and they're willing to loan us a boat to go out on the lake, and maybe we should try that, and if we can foresee a peak, hot, warm weekend, nice day traffic area, maybe we can get that together and get some recruits in a boat down there and kind of...
If you recall, we did that years ago. The issue, in fact, that's why we hired Officer Sterling in the first place, was to work on that boat. But I think our issue right now is just to get the equipment, and then the chief would have to figure out his personnel issue, because there's union issues involved in all of that, but that's something we can...
Yeah, no, absolutely. We've been in discussion with the chief, he's extremely on top of this with us, and we're having discussions all the time, because it's coming up again, and we know there's concerns down there, and that we're trying to level out and get it more organized and more contrary. But the boat would be a loaner from a surrounding town. Was it Carver?
Carver, yes.
Carver was going to loan us a boat for the weekend, all equipped, ready to go, we just got to put bodies in it, and... Yeah, it wouldn't be every weekend, but we're going to try to get it in there so we can see what effect we can...
It's mostly the jet skis, the town jet skis, you know, coming too close, you know, Mike, myself have gone down there, tried to talk to these people, and they're like, "Yeah, yeah, yeah," and then they just take off and they start their shenanigans again.
In the jet skis.
In the jet skis, yeah.
Okay. So we can take that up with the Police Department, ask them how to make that work? Like I said...
We've been working with them on that.
Okay, all right, good. Yeah, okay, all right. The Board have any questions?
No, I appreciate your efforts. I feel like the water's getting cleaner, and as a result, we're getting more folks that want to use it, so I hope, it's already the middle of March, and we're going to blink, it's going to be Memorial Day, so I hope we try and, you know...
We're giving up.
Yeah, we get an early jump on things so that we can, you know, we want people to use it, but use it responsibly, so whatever we can do to make that happen. You guys, you know, from talking with Cody, you guys have a considerable amount of power, so go to town.
We want to have two of you guys to make sure we're not overstepping our bounds, you know?
Have at it.
Okay, thank you.
Good, okay, great. So then you'll handle the sticker issue, we'll check with the Town Council and the Police Department on the townwide parking, and the Parking Commissioner clerk on the townwide ticket price, and you'll work with the Police Chief on the boat patrol, if we can pull that off again. I thought when we had it in the past, it worked really well.
Yeah, they've opened it with whatever county.
I used to call, I called the guy Judge Dret, "I am the law," and it worked very well out there. So I guess what we're going to do now is we're coming up, you know, we get the drawings started, we're going to recondition the beach, I don't know whether we're going to get it in before this summer, fix the rips through the waterways, the grass, there's a runoff, so we got something in mind, we got to meet with the Conservation Commission next, so we're ready for that now, so we can get our filings in.
Great.
So that's moving forward too. We're going to set up, where we're going to have drawings, so we're going to come up with some, not drawings, signs. So working on the signs, you got, we're going to come up with some gate signs for the entry of when you go in the parking lot, you got some down by the fence line, also signs down by the turnaround where the boats are dropped in the lake. We've also discussed looking into what it would take to fix it and get a boat ramp in there that's navigable for the residents.
We have some funds for that, we also have some funds that Ford Selectmen passed and voted on, which is in our coffees, I guess you might call it, and we just haven't gotten to that phase of working on redesigning that parking area, I mean, the launching area on Fourth Ave, we're trying to take a lot of study, I mean, you know, so...
Let me talk to the, it's going to be money, because it's like the state boat ramp, when they put the ramp and the dock in, it takes a little engineering. There's permits, which the town won't have to pay for a lot, some of them, but there's a lot of permitting, the engineer that has done these drawings is going to come up with an idea on what it would take to get that done properly, so it's as good as the state boat wants over on 58. But I think getting the front and the beach and that all squared away right out, that's the priority for down on the Fourth Ave. I think the next one is the push, there's also funds for Route 36. So I've also given some old drawings that we had for our Route 36 project, which goes right by that ramp, and some of the soundings, and I also gave them a copy of the one on 58, the engineer, to show what, you know, what the state and the federal government's going to want, the soundings and all that, so he's working on a number to figure out what would it cost to get drawings up and running for either, boat ramps at either place, but I think the beach is mostly the sand and getting it operational and the runoff to stop eroding it, to get it back to where it was 20, 30 years ago. And the 36 boat ramp, I think there's like five grand in there, at least to get the thing going, and to continue on to the drawings that were already prepared when we did, put in Route 36, I think it was 2012? No, it was 2005?
Oh, the weeds?
No, when they redid all Route 36.
Yeah, oh, right, yeah, yeah.
So we've got those drawings from the Highway Department, so now they got a good start on it, so that'll say it was money, at least they got benchmarks, reference points, to come up with how we can get a ramp in there. You know, it's kind of treacherous on that corner sometimes, over on 36. So that's a project. We've got Bruce Noble's working on the parcel land over here, that was donated to the town next to the church, and further in, looking at trail grants to put walking trails in.
Uran Park?
Uran Park, yeah, yeah.
Well, that's, I don't...
Marcus Uran.
Marcus Uran, yeah.
He keeps forgetting every time.
Cranberry, Cranberry King, who donated that land to us a long time ago.
So I've already kind of briefly went over what we're going to be looking, I gave them a copy, Cody gave us some Dartmouth trail grants that they have done before, so I got at least kind of a template to start moving, so Bruce is going to be walking on that, and hopefully we can like squeeze it in a dog park or something. It's close to town, you can access it maybe from this parking lot or the entrance over there, and it's quite a wide area. The only problem, you know, to get it up and going is when we had a big storm back in 15, 20 years ago, all the debris, a lot of it, went down there.
Oh, yeah.
It dumped it, so this company's that'll come in and they'll chew it right up and take it off, so that's, but that's an area we're looking at, maybe getting some trails that's close to town, at the center of town. I think everybody would like to see something like that as well, and that's what we're working on also. So we're not just stuck in one area, I mean, we're concentrating on one, but we're trying to do a townwide, what can we get this, get this opened up so everybody can go out and enjoy it? Because, you know, we don't have any money, so we might as well enjoy it somehow, if we rock around.
Connect with nature.
Okay, that's great. Thank you for the update, and great work. It's nice to see this committee really going to town, because sometimes it was all this quieter.
I want to thank the Selectmen and the Fire Chief, the Police Chief, actually, the Fire Chief will be next, maybe. the fire chief will be next, maybe. Next chief. Highway department, everybody, all the departments have been helping us out, really. It's been super cooperative. And we appreciate all your help that they've given us.
Sure.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Thanks, guys.
Appreciate it.
Thanks for the update.
Okay. The next thing on our agenda is Scott Clausen and the horse shows. Mr. Clausen's here.
Jeremy, I don't know if Jeremy has a hand.
Scott, do you mind just going to the microphone for us?
Oh. Are we allowed to speak?
About what?
Just presentation.
Um, all right, yeah. Come on.
Sorry. That was a dress rehearsal, Scott.
Chairman, let's be nine, which if you have, I have just a couple of questions, because I kinda came in late. So if I'm understanding correctly, we'll have a parking fee for the boat ramp on Route 36 in East Lake where taxpaying residents can access that boat ramp?
Well, why don't we have Mike explain it again?
Yeah, there's, yeah. No, no, I mean, there's no fees. Town residents, there's no fees from anyone. I'm talking about residents of the Commonwealth.
So non, non Halifax.
Non Halifax.
Non Halifax taxpayers.
Yeah, so will they be able to pay a fee if they wanna have an efficient tournament on Eastmont Ponce? Reasonable fee?
I believe the chief and Ted, this was.
Are you, are you asking about the?
Tournament's parking over on 36.
Yeah.
Oh, the parking on 36?
Yes. Because that's a, you know, I know that that's a town ramp, but.
Yeah.
Under the constitution of the state, that's a great pond. So really.
Yeah.
I don't think it's appropriate to ban people from parking there. I think it's appropriate to charge them. If they wanna come fish or something, I just don't think it's fair that all the pressure is put on Westmont Ponce.
Okay.
Instead of East.
Cody?
If we're talking about the one under the Office of Fishing and Boating Access, we would need to discuss with them any fees we're gonna charge.
Yeah.
Because, because it's, while we own it, it's technically, we have an agreement with them in perpetuity. And any changes, I'm not sure we're able to implement fees for residents only or non-residents, because it is under the office of the, the state office of fishing and boating access. So I was unaware that we were talking about that. And I thought we were just talking about the beach.
This is the, the boat ramp on Eastmont Ponce that we're talking about. So.
Yeah, that's.
So, I mean, in my opinion, in my understanding of the law, is that under the constitution, that's a great pond. It's artificially divided by a state highway. That ramp comes off a state highway. You can, of course, have boating laws or whatever you want. But I still believe that boat ramp should be accessible by taxpayers of the Commonwealth for the purposes of fishing and fowl.
Are you talking about the Route 36, right?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So why don't we do this? Well, we'll, we'll look into it.
Can I try to answer that?
Yeah.
Okay. You can put your boat in there if you want. You don't have to be a resident.
Right.
It's parking across the street, you gotta be a resident. And that's where the fishing tournaments come in. And generally, they go through the boards, everybody signs off, the appropriate departments. You have a problem, generally, there is no fees.
Okay.
This is something we need to look at. Not this year. This fishing tournament, we just need to be notified as a town for the police and fire, just so they can be aware. Usually that goes through the selectmen's office.
Not, not fishing.
We haven't done the fishing tournaments.
The, the fishing tournaments go through the police chief. We don't, we don't have any jurisdiction on that.
So it's my, it's just my opinion that anybody who lives in the state of Massachusetts should have the ability to launch their boat in Eastmont Ponce and fish. And if you look at what other towns have done, they can charge a reasonable fee for parking, for upkeep of the ramp in the parking area. I think we need to look into that. I think that's important. Another thing regarding the Fourth Ave beach, I would advise against adding too much sand to that area, because if you remember back in like the 50s and 60s, I don't remember if I was alive, but through my research, we, we dumped a lot of sand over there, kind of where the state ramp is now. And I think a lot of that probably washed into the lake. And there's a lot of sand in the lake that we could actually just kind of pull out from the beach.
These are issues that the Parks Commission is in charge. We, we really don't have anything to do with it. So I think probably the best thing to do would be for you to make appointment and speak with the Parks Commission about that. Because we don't, they're just advising us on what they're up to, so that we can coordinate whatever we have to do. And, and as far, and we're talking about the townwide parking ticket. But how the parks, how the parks are run is a separate commission. They, they'll handle that.
Also, let's the public know.
Yeah, we should definitely put something on our town website. If somebody, like a pass club wants to have a tournament on Eastmont Ponce, they can, you know, go online, like maybe get a permit or something. That way they're not getting parking tickets and stuff. So that'd be good. And it's good for the town, because they're coming in, they're filling up their boats with gas, they're buying groceries.
Well, that's why we come up with a non-resident, non-town taxpayer. Generally, people in, everybody pays taxes.
Right.
I don't think Connecticut's or Rhode Island's coming all the way.
Right.
So that's why we felt, that's a normal fee.
Okay.
And now there is no fees for, for homeless. Just make sure you get the permission that's, we know where they are, watching out the different departments.
I just don't think a lot of people are aware of that.
Okay, all right, good. Anyone else have anything about the boat ramps?
Tom, Tom, I'm in, you are.
Yeah.
One more minute.
All right. Thanks again. So Mr. Clausen, I apologize. Come on back up. This has to do with the horse shows on your property. And, go ahead.
Good evening. Yeah, I got a leg, a notice from Pam that you were questioning on the number of days of horse shows and the number of multi-days. And in October of 2020, I came before.
Excuse me a minute. Mike and Jeremy and Tom.
Fellas.
We can't, we can't hear. If you're gonna talk in the back, I'm sorry.
No problem. In 2020, I came before the board. And we increased the days from, I think it was 38 to 43 for 2021. And then from, in 2022, we went to 48 days. But we didn't increase the multi-days. I think that was overlooked at the time.
Okay.
Because we don't do any one-day horse shows. We only do multi-day horse shows. So right now, we're at 48 days with 10 multi-days horse shows. And, so I guess that's what I'm requesting to either revise or we just gotta add the multi-day into the request that I did in 2020. I have, I have the minutes for that.
So the consent agreement now allows for eight multi-day shows, but the board, at their discretion, can allow additional days. And so Mr. Clausen's requesting 10 multi-day shows this year.
Yeah, is that, that's what I understand. That's how you have it? Okay, all right. And you are saying that the, even under eight, that you have as many as 48 days or something like that, that you could run?
Right.
You're only gonna do 48 days now over 10 shows, instead of eight shows?
Well, they're only five-day shows. They've always been five days. We have one two-day show.
Okay.
So.
All right, so that'd be, well, that'd be 48, yeah.
Yeah, that would be 10.
Okay. So.
It's what we ran last year in the year prior, in 2023 and in 2022, same number of sho, shows, same number of days.
That you did last year?
Yes, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. So for the last two years, you've been doing 10 shows?
10 multi-days, 48 days.
Oh, I see, okay.
Yeah.
I thought this was something new. So basically, it's been, you've been doing it for the last couple of years, we just haven't talked about it.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, all right. Anybody on the board have any comments, questions?
No, I think I remember when you came in last year, it was the same thing, where you were looking to go to 10. And I, I believe we, we did okay to go to 10. So I think he's just going to continue, looking to continue what he did last year, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, no, that's what I'm saying. 10 multi-days, multi-shows. I mean, he did it last year, year before.
Okay. And we haven't had any complaints that you've gotten?
I, let me see there. Yeah, I contacted the fire chief, police chief in Bon Valley. And a couple of times, I think when your shows first started from the beginning of the year, I think the police usually, usually will get some calls. And so is that correct, chief?
Yeah, so the only complaint we've had is actually, they usually come through the board. Some of the, some of the neighbors, I think beyond, when the, when the show starts up, will complain of the noise level. And I think Clausen has done, you know, as best he could to try to change that. And, you know, changing the, how the speakers were facing all different things. But then, once we, it kind of like resolves itself. And there's one particular neighbor that pretty much every year should, should call. But other than that, we had other, other issues. I don't know, the firefighter, they have to tell there to respond for, for emergencies. So there's a firefighter there at all times during the show. So we've got some issues there.
Okay.
We're also continuing to work on the sound system. We're putting all the wires and readjusting all the speakers in the month of April. And that's a, one big project that we're working on, because I don't like hearing the sound either. So we are definitely working on that more, as we continue to work on it, you know.
Okay.
It's been an ongoing issue for, for myself and for my other neighbor.
I mean, I, I didn't realize that, that this is something that had been happening for the last couple of years anyway. And since we don't have any real issues with it, other than like the chief says, it's, in the beginning, there's, there's, it just stirs things up for, for a little bit, but that's kind of to be expected. Sorry, so. Anything from the board?
No.
One way or the other?
No, I, I think I'd be okay with making a motion to allow Mr. Clausen to have 10 multi-day shows for the 2024 calendar year.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right, good. Any further discussion? No one else is here about this, I assume? Oh, good, all right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And it's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Good luck.
All right. And the last thing we have is a live entertainment application from Paige Maggie. Mr. Hurley. Mr. Hurley, hi.
Me and my fiancee are gonna get married at our house on Thompson Street.
Okay.
So we.
We just need to put your name in our record. So you're Dylan Hurley?
Dylan Callahan.
Okay, thank you.
Dan Hurley is my stepdad.
Oh, okay, good, thank you. All right. All right. And you're getting married.
Yes.
Oh, good, well.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We don't wanna be in the way of that, do we?
No.
It's been nine years in the making.
Oh.
Nine years, April 1st.
You just gotta make sure you're sure. Nine years, is it? On that? No. So this is on August 31st. The police chief, fire chief, board of health, everyone has okayed it. Mrs., Mrs. Hurley, Tracy Hurley, and Dan Hurley will be in charge. So, I mean, everything looks in order?
Yeah.
Any discussion from the board?
You got a song picked out yet?
No, not at the moment.
All right. You better get on, it's gonna be here soon.
No, our luck to you.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have, here for this? No? Okay, good. So I'll make a motion to approve the live entertainment permit application for August 31st at 218 Thompson Street.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Congratulations on both.
Congratulations.
Good luck, guys. Appreciate it.
Have fun.
All right. Now we get back to the regular agenda. Do we want to go with the approval of the minutes? We'll go to the top.
Yep. Approval, I move to the front of approval of selectmen minutes, regular session December 28, 2023. Regular session February 24th, 2024. Executive session February 27th, 2024.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Warrants and commitments?
I move to the front of approval following warrants, commitments. Vendor warrant number 80 for $82,180.71. School warrant number 81 for $247,906.75. Ambulance commitment from February 19th, 2024 to February 25th, 2024 for $50,572.78. Ambulance commitment from February 26th, 2024 to March 3rd, 2024 for $60,181.85.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
I move to approve the following warrants, commitments. Payroll warrant number 82 for $477,774.67. Vendor warrant number 83 for $1,546,618.7. Repossion warrant number 84 for $166,144.7. Mobile home park fee number three for $5,160.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Are you here, are you, are you here? You just wanna watch? Because you.
Nice.
It's pretty exciting stuff.
Yeah.
We can sign the permit. And I don't know, we need to keep a copy of it and get it from Pam.
I'll, I'll call your fiancee up, taking it up, okay?
You have a second?
Mike, go ahead. You're welcome to stay. I'm not trying to hurry up. Okay. The next thing on our agenda is Community Preservation Act proposed warrant language. So, let's see here.
So this is, you may recall at a previous meeting, we had the community preservation, the coalition come in and do a presentation at the request of selectmen Sealeg on what it would look like to bring in the community pres, adopt the Community Preservation Act. At that time, the board voted to further investigate this and potentially put this on the warrant for the spring town meeting. So what we have here in your packet is the, some figures, because you have to decide on what percentage of a surcharge you would like to present. And also the exemptions. So there's up to three exemptions that the board can adopt. So, and Sealeg, I don't know if you wanna.
Sure, no, this is, we'll get to that, just to be clear. The, the percentage and the exemptions, are those, are those things that the board of selectmen does after town meeting approves this? Or these are things that would be at town meeting?
This is what you would decide on now to put in the warrant language, the article for town meeting. That town meeting would then hold on.
Okay, yep, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, that's okay. So, yeah, this has kind of been a, a pet project of mine for a while, going back to the Hops days. In doing my research for the playground, I noticed that we were one of the few communities around that doesn't do the Community Preservation Act. So I wanted to try and see if there was interest from the community. I think it's a fantastic program where we, it's, goes towards projects that we're going to need to essentially do anyway here in the town. So my attitude is, why not recoup some of that money from the state? We have exemptions that we're going to include into this to try to insulate some folks. There's a low-income exemption. There's a $100,000 deductible essentially from your, your taxable value exemption. So we're gonna include exemptions to help the folks that might, I don't wanna say struggle, but might not be that into this kind of thing. But just in an early analysis, the, the language that we're looking at is a 1% increase, which is the smallest available increase of the CPA program. And then if you do some quick math, the state sent us, we would generate with a low-income exemption about $184,000. And then you add in what the state would kick in. So it's, to me, it makes sense. To me, again, the four, the four kind of buckets that you can do are historic, open space, housing, and recreation. So I feel like we here in Halifax wanna preserve Halifax and keep Halifax Halifax. I believe this program is designed to help the town do that. So I wanna at least bring it to the people, get it to town meeting. We can vote on it there and hopefully pass it come election time. So that's kind of where we're at, what, what my idea is for the CPA.
All right. So why don't we open it up? I assume some of you folks are here for this. So if anyone has any questions, comments, suggestions? Yeah, come on up, come on up for the.
Wait, we're gonna step forward in a second.
Don't worry, Jonathan will take care of it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just have a couple of questions. One, the, the minimum amount is 1%. Now, years ago, we had a moderator. And, and I'm concerned about this, because we had a moderator who didn't allow any, what he called substantive changes to what had been given to the people as the warrant information. And so I'm thinking, the maximum that you can, you can allocate is 3%. It seems to me most of the towns around here are at 1.5%. If we went, and I'm not suggesting, I'm not saying that. are at 1 and 1/2%. Um, if we went and I'm not suggesting, I'm not saying this is what I think we should do. I'm just asking, if we put in 3% and lowered it, if town meeting said, you know, that's too much and we, they had the figures on what it was going to cost for it, is it going to be a problem lowering it? Uh, is it going to be a, I don't think it would be a problem lowering it, but it might be a problem raising it from the 1%. That's my one question or concern. And that's just because of what it used to be and it may not be like that anymore. Um, the other concern I have or a question I have is, um, I, I think it's a great program. When it first started in 2000, the state was matching, uh, whatever the town put in by 100%. Um, it's, we've had some tough times, but I believe even this year it was for most towns, I think the base was like 25%.
22, I think it was, yeah.
I'm sorry?
22.
12, okay. So it's, it's still money that for 24 years, we've been turning back to the state. And as you, you know, I, I think it's important for us to look because it's such a protective act that if we vote 1%, it takes a town meeting vote, I, I believe, to increase that at any point. Uh, if we spend money from, it's a town meeting vote to do that. So the town has total control over that money within the parameters of the act. So I think I would, I think one is the very minimum and, and I'm not sure we, we'll never catch up, but we have a historical center in this town that people come out twice, well, at least twice a year to, to enjoy and support. And we have buildings in that area that need to be, um, maintained and cared for, and there's no budget for that. Um, we have fields, we have so many potential uses. Um, and, and I would think before town meeting, we'd be able to show what other towns have done with that money. Um, but I think the 1% might be low. That's just my personal opinion, especially if there's any problem raising it on the town meeting floor. And, and also I think that I personally would rather see us go in at, at least 1 and 1/2, if not 2. The, the one provision, which I don't think we, we would, we can do, but one provision is if after everybody's gotten the state money, um, there's money left, that can be split among the towns, but you have to be at the 3% level in order to be eligible for that. So I'm not suggesting 3%, but I think 1% is personally, I think it's really low. Um, but if it can't be, if it can be amended, then I think there's just homework to do on it and we can see. But I commend you for bringing this up because we're 24 years behind the eight ball on this and we should have done it long enough.
And of the, to dovetail what Candy was saying, of the, I want to say there's 190 municipalities that take part, none have withdrawn from the program.
196 presently.
There you go.
But.
But it's counting, right?
Yeah.
But no, again, it's a, I don't want to say it's a shame, but it, you, you think of the projects we could have been doing, uh, and ones that we were going to need to do anyway. If we want to keep the history here and we want to keep our open spaces here, they're the same, you know, I don't want to say complaints, but they're the same battle cries of people here in Halifax. Well, that's what this program is in part designed to do. So it just seemed like a logical thing. And the 1%, Candy, I, my idea is to just get it on, you know? And, and I know a lot of people in this town are hesitant with, when you say an increase in a tax bill, it, it doesn't go over very well here, which I totally get. Um, but again, what, what, what investment can you do where you're going to get 20% of your money back to you? To me, it, it seems like a no brainer.
I, I, I would, I, I, I agree with you, but I think maybe when we see the figures on our, of what it will be for 1%, 1 and 1/2, 2. Um, and I, my understanding, it's pay, it's, it's tied to your taxes. So you, you're doing it twice a year. So it might be $30 or something. I don't know. I, I don't know. But I think that's important information.
Sure.
And then we'll see. You're right. None, none of us like to spend money, but a lot of this is money we're going to spend anyway.
Sure.
Either out, out of no choice because, or we're going to have some very controlled money saved when the town.
Sure. And, and just to give you, uh, the state has given us a chart here, just to give you an idea, ballpark. Um, average home value here, um, with, uh, let's see, with the exemption for sort of, uh, would be $53 a year. So.
With your tax bill, you're talking a little over.
That's at a, at a home averaged, uh, average value of $458,000. Just to give you a ballpark.
That's the 1% number.
That's the 1%. Yep.
So it's $25 twice a year.
With 1.8, you're looking at, I'm sorry, 1.5, you're looking at 80, like dollars a year. So.
But that's with the exemption.
Correct.
100,000.
Correct.
So that's, did you say 80? Yeah. I think that's important information.
Sure.
For everybody to have.
Well, I know Candy, you had shown interest and I know there are folks that are looking to get a committee going. So, um, if anybody's watching this and they're interested in, you know, bringing these numbers to the town, uh, make yourself known.
Anybody else have anything? Uh, yes, Frank.
Uh, Frank Johnston, Elm Street. Jonathan, you mentioned exemptions. What do you mean by exemptions?
So there are, uh, the exact verbiage, let me see if I can pull it up. Um, there's a low income exemption. Hold on, I have it here. The three exemptions would be, uh, sexual, property owned and occupied as a domicile by any persons who qualifies for low income housing or low to moderate income housing, senior housing in the town as defined. Um, so that you would have your, um, your 100,000 exemption there. There would be 100,000 of the value of each taxable parcel. So there's your 100,000 there and 100,000 of the value of each taxable parcel of class three commercial property and class four industrial property as defined in section 2A, chapter 59. So you would, you would have your tax bill and we would, let's say you're, you're assessed at $600,000 on your property, you could deduct 100,000. So you, essentially for this program, your parcel wouldn't be worth 600,000. It would come in as worth 500,000. So that's the 100,000.
Because you can only claim one of the exemptions, is that correct?
Correct.
Per address. And then you mentioned, um, funds from the state. Is that the 22% you mentioned, Cody? That's what the average was this year of return was 22%?
Yeah, I think it was actually, I think it was about 21.02.
Eight, nine, or 02. And how did, how did, how did they come about that number?
They have, uh, so this is funded by the, uh, the stamp taxes at the registry deeds.
Stamp tax, yeah.
And then they have a trust fund and then basically the state reviews that trust fund balance annually.
Right.
And they have a calculation.
It's drawn from that.
Yeah.
And then Jonathan, you also mentioned, um, four programs?
Sure. There's essentially four buckets that the money has to go into. Uh, and as part of the program, you have to keep at least 10% in each of those buckets that you've raised. Um, but as long as each of the four buckets have their 10%, you can use the remaining 70%. You know, let's say you wanted to use one of your buckets, um, for the project that you would like. We would create a CPA committee, uh, with residents, with people at town hall, where we would take solicit, um, ideas essentially for how the town would like to use that money.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask, who makes the decision on?
We would create a committee. We would create a committee that vets all the applications, um, and decides how the town would like to use the money. So that's the great thing is that the state, you know, doesn't tell us what to do. Once this money is raised, it's, it's ours.
Then you choose one. Each one has a minimum of 10% in it.
Correct.
And then you have approximately 70% remaining. And then you put that into the one that was chosen for that particular year.
Whatever, whatever the town decides to do.
Town meeting has to approve the expenditure.
Yep.
I think, I don't think you.
Well, that, all right. So there is another step John reminded me. The committee will make the recommendation. That recommendation has to go to town meeting.
It's a town meeting.
So town meeting, the residents will decide how, you know, they will take the suggestion of the committee, but the committee will be the one making the presentation at town meeting to how the town wants to spend it.
So you give them four choices?
Uh, four categories.
Four categories. Yeah. But, but you could take, you know, 10 suggestions of one of the buckets. You know what I'm saying? However, we want to divide it up is how.
And then it has to go on the warrant for town meeting.
Correct.
And then it's approved that way.
Correct.
And the 70% of it goes to the primary.
We don't have to use it all every year too. We can, you know, we can, if we want to hold off and we want to save for something bigger the following year, we can do that as well.
Who makes that decision?
That would be the recommendation of the, of the committee, of the, the CPA committee that we would create.
And then the, the residents have to vote on that as well?
I, I don't think so.
It wouldn't be, if it's not presented.
It wasn't presented, it would just sit, it would just sit there until we made a presentation.
Right. Okay. All right. Thank you.
So that's all right. In other words, they would show up, somebody would come up with a, a warrant article that said, we want to use so much of the, uh, Community Preservation Act money to fill, fix a baseball field or repair a historic building or, or one of those other categories. And then that goes to town meeting and has to be voted on at town meeting. Well, otherwise the money just stays in the bank.
And then who approves whether we go with 1, 2, or 3%?
We would at our town meeting.
And town meeting approves that as well.
Mm-hmm. And the voters. So adopting the CPA would have to go to the ballot.
The first, sorry, I'm not really explaining this very well. The first step is our town meeting to get it on the ballot for November.
Yeah.
So it's a two-step process.
Two-step. Yeah.
Yep.
All right. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Amy Troop, 10 Hillside Avenue. Um, I have a question. So, uh, 24 years ago, did it start? Did you set up? Around that? And you said it was 100% then?
Sure.
Do you have, um, the last 24 years of how it went from 100% down to the 21.02 this year? Can you show us a history of that amount of money? Um, that would be a really big help on that.
Absolutely. Good.
And then my point would be to say that if we want to preserve the town and keep it the way it is, why are we looking at MBTA housing?
That's a, a different, a different topic altogether.
Not at all, because you can't.
Sure. Come on up.
You cannot preserve a town when you have MBTA housing because I've stated to you before that they have crossed out a half a mile to the MBTA station. So that means they could go anywhere in town. So you cannot preserve the town of Halifax if you allow MBTA housing in. And I really keep urging you about that. So like, it sounds great to preserve the town, but really how we preserve the town is by keeping our bylaws that are not antiquated, that were put there for a really good reason to protect our water supply, to protect us from not having too much traffic on our roads, to not overpopulate our schools, because that's, that's like gonna cut it, right? So and then a public safety building, we're gonna have to hire more police officers, more firefighters. We're already in danger of that currently with four wells down and huge money going out to the wells. So I love the fact of preserving the town, but changing the entire town's bylaws without thought of any of these things is what's not preserving our town. And I would urge you to read the implementation plan of that grant for the Preservation Act because those little things that you think you're getting might have ties that have problems later. I love the idea of preserving, but we cannot do it if we throw out history of why we have the bylaws here. Again, all four wells are down.
Okay. Do we have any other, uh, comments or questions about the Community Preservation Act? Anything from the board?
Nope. I hope I made that understandable.
We don't really need to do anything unless you want to change what's going to be in the warrant, but we still have time to do.
Can I just double check with Cody? To Candy's point, if we set the language at 1%, we could do an amendment on the, on the floor of town meeting to make it 1 and 1/2 if that is.
I don't see why not. We can double check that, but it would be any sort of town meeting, you know, you can, you can make an amendment.
Sure.
We'll check.
But we'll double check.
Check with the moderator and ask him what his view was on that.
Okay. So to that point, I, I think we could have it as is and if we wanted to, we could do the 1% breakdown, the 1 and 1/2, all the, you know, we have that information, have it readily available.
Okay. Unless there's any further comments, we'll, uh, move on. Um, so we don't need to do anything on this at this point. We'll, we'll, we'll warrant coming into us pretty soon anyway. All right. Uh, we have a request from the school committee to delay town meeting. Um, let's see here, just looking at the email. Um, it says, we are working on budget, on the budget. This is from Lauren Laws, uh, and trying to bring it in line with what we'll work with the town budget. Halifax Elementary School had a vote to make the request to push off town meeting so we can vote the budget. They required 45 days before town meeting. Is that something you could bring to the board of selectmen? This was addressed to Cody. So, um, open it up for discussion. I don't know. Apparently we can, and we've already said it, but according to our town council, we do have the ability to do this if we like.
So, yeah, this comes as a result of, um, the proposed or most recent proposed budget of the end of February by the, um, Silver Lake Elementary School, um, is resulting in a 10% increase in the school department budget, a little less than 1.5 million dollars. Uh, we cannot absorb that, uh, within our revenue projections. Uh, Kingston and Plimpton are in the same boat. I have a meeting scheduled with their, um, administrators tomorrow afternoon just to, you know, make sure we're all on the same page. They, um, have not been formally asked at this point to delay their town meetings. Kingston is before hours and Plimpton is two days after our town meeting. Um, but we are working diligently with the schools to try to come up with a budget that is sustainable for, for all three towns and also, um, provides the best level of services to the, to the schools.
So this is both Silver Lake and Halifax Elementary that you're looking?
The budget, the budget issue is big, yeah, big picture.
All right. Um.
Gordon Andrews, 244 Elm Street. So the current projection numbers that I got tonight was the total cost of education is increasing by 6.7 million. That's what's going to be presented at the meeting on Thursday. I believe Cody had received a copy of that information. That is going from, um, they changed the columns here. So we're going from about $50 million to $56.7 million in one year.
This is which budget?
This is the total cost of education across four towns. So because of the regional agreement that was, uh, approved at the, uh, special town meeting in December, the movement from out of district special needs cost and preschool has now changed. So what used to be in different buckets that fell under the towns columns now shifts to Silver Lake's columns. And because of DESI, there are added requirements to what they have to do for the administration aspect of running the programs that were formerly out of district programs for the town of Halifax, but were being run by Silver Lake staff. So there's, it was all done on purpose to, to bring children and students that were out, were being sent out of our three towns back close. We reduced the transportation costs. We reduced the tuition costs. So bringing those programs in was a, a cost benefit for the towns. But according to DESI, our regional agreement didn't account for those types of things. So the program that we were running wasn't allowed by the way that we were doing it. So right now you've got that change that's showing up in the budgets and then you have an overall increase, increase of spending. So the way the, the process works is Silver Lake has to vote their budget 45 days in advance of the first town meeting. Right now it's scheduled for Kingston, May 4th, which means Silver Lake has to pass the budget by March 20th. So in order to get to numbers that I think the towns could actually afford, you're looking at massive cuts. So they're going to have to, e- even if they agree that the number is correct Thursday, there's four budgets, there's four school committees, they're all gonna have to run through a process of deciding what they're gonna cut, what's the correct programs to cut. And then they're gonna have to vote on that. And then the town's budget is gonna have to be based off of what Silver Lake approves and what the town elementary schools approve. So I, I would suggest that you, you push out at least two weeks.
There you go.
At, at least. Because this, there's the four, the four school budgets have to be voted on. And right now you have administration running from one budget to the next budget to the next budget, barely keeping up with the programs that they're trying to run this year, as well as the fact that right now they're projecting a deficit for this year for the special needs transportation and tuition costs for the way the system's set up right now. So you have, you have a special town meeting issue which would be funding that. So, uh, and I got a text.
Funding what?
This, the, um, the special needs tuition and transportation for this current fiscal year is more than what was budgeted.
Oh, you mean the last special town meeting that we did?
No. So in order for us to supplement funding for the current fiscal year, we would technically have to have a special town meeting. We, you hold it, we would hold it within our annual.
No, yeah.
Uh, but it looks like there may be a deficit for the current fiscal year that we're gonna need to address, but we don't. need to address, but we don't have those figures.
And those figures are gonna be delayed if the administration is working on the budget for the upcoming year. So you've got a catch-22 with all these shifts have happened, the costs have increased. The state allowed the out-of-district tuitions to grow by 14 and 1/2% last year. This year, they're allowing them to grow over, I think it's 4.68. So you've got this dramatic increase in costs.
Does, this is both budgets, both Silver Lake and the elementary school budget. And I think you just told me that Kingston's town meeting, usually in April, but this year it's the beginning of May.
May 4th.
First weekend of May.
Have they approached this issue yet?
I've talked with the chair, and I've talked with the town administrator. I asked them to consider the changes. I know that they're coming to the meeting on Thursday night.
But if we have, you mentioned the 20th of March would have to be...
45 days.
45 days before our town meeting, so that means...
Kingston's town meeting.
Oh, that's Kingston's town meeting?
Right.
Oh, 20th of March for Kingston. So really, I mean, if Kingston says no...
So, John, then the process is if Kingston says no, they'll say no to the number. Halifax and Plimpton will probably say no to the number. So then you have to have Silver Lake re-vote their budget after they get two no's.
I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about the request before us to delay town meeting.
Yes.
So if Kingston doesn't delay town meeting before...
20th.
The 20th. Then what we do won't make any difference.
Well, it will, because you could, you could delay the town meeting so that Kingston, so if Kingston votes no, right? Because the process is gonna be the same. They're not gonna be ready in time. So if you delay Halifax, at least you might get one correct number. If you don't delay, you're probably looking at another town meeting. You'll have, if we vote no, which we would, because there's no way the town can afford this, you're gonna have to put a 1 and 1/2 to, you know, a 1 to 1 and 1/4 million override on the ballot in order to hit this number. So...
Boy, it's just vote the number down, and then it goes back and has to be redone again. Like, it's happened in the past.
Right, but you're gonna have to have another town meeting then. So they'll have 30 days, and then you're gonna have another town meeting. So you're still gonna have that cost, but then you're gonna have the town budgets totally up in the air, because once two towns vote Silver Lake, that's the number. So then you have to make the cuts over at the elementary school.
So what's our 45 days before our meeting? Do we know that date off the top of our heads?
Well, I don't know off the top of my head, but I think that it's the 45 days from the first town meeting.
It's the first?
It's the first town meeting.
For our first or Kingston's?
Kingston's first right now.
So it's 20th regardless. It's March 20th, that's the date.
Right now, yeah.
But again, that's, but that's only, Kingston doesn't even have this on their agenda, do they? Like, nobody has asked them to postpone their town?
Yeah, they have.
Yes.
They have.
Yes.
When are they gonna vote on it?
They're, I believe their next meeting is next week.
I'll have a better idea tomorrow. I have a meeting with both the town administrators.
We, our next meeting's the 26th, right? And we could still delay.
When are you gonna go to print for the town budget?
The board would vote the final warrant and budget on the 26th of March. So we'd go to print. We probably have about a week to play with. If we, we could push it back, hours back hypothetically, probably to the second, if you guys vote the warrant budget on this April 2nd, which is that following Tuesday. In order to keep town meeting, the 13th it is now, we couldn't go any more further back than that. Because at that point, then we just have to finish formatting everything, get it to print. That takes a little while. Then the print company gets it to the post office, and then we need to get it out to everyone two weeks before the town meeting.
So what dates are we talking about, then? Like, how late can we go before we have to address this? Assuming Kingston handles it on next week, right? Then, and we have our request to us, just assume it this way, assume Kingston says yes and pushes us off for whatever time, and we, our latest date to do that, would we still be able to do it on the 26th and be within the timeframe?
Yeah, I mean, you could.
I mean, all that, like the...
The real question is, are you gonna have real numbers to put into the budget? That's, that's why I'm saying that you need the time.
Well, I get that. I understand that, I just...
I know we have, there's a meeting scheduled for Thursday.
Thursday, right.
So I feel like to vote on something now before at least having that meeting, I feel like is premature. So I would at least like to have that meeting on Thursday, you know, with all three towns involved, to try to get to the bottom of this budget, and then maybe make our decision on the heels after that meeting. I would feel comfortable doing that as opposed to making this decision tonight before Thursday.
Right. I get that. I guess the only reason why I'm raising this as an issue is because your numbers are gonna be totally junk. So everyone's working off of junk numbers right now. You've got finance committees spinning their wheels, you have a meeting tomorrow night where you're gonna make a recommendation on the cost of living increase. All these things are gonna have to be looked at.
You know what, though? I mean, the budget for Silver Lake may have gone up quite a bit, or the schools, I should say, had gone up quite a bit. But this is the situation we're in almost every year. Like, we're always, we're always at the last-minute rejigging numbers. It just happens.
But this increase seems historic. I can't remember, I mean, you've been doing this a while. When's the last time we've had a 10% increase in education?
I've never seen this before.
Well, still, I mean, we'll see how that...
And here's, here's my question, is I haven't got a firm answer on why we've had this giant increase. I feel like we were told when we switched our pre-K and we moved some things around that it wouldn't have a dramatic effect on the budget, but it seems to me that it has.
I don't have an answer for you on that, because I'm only reviewing the data that's being put into the budget, so I can't tell you. The only other request that I saw tonight from... It was a request to make sure that the middle school SRO is included as a warrant article.
Yep.
And to make sure that Halifax had in a special town meeting request for the special needs cost article.
Oh, you want a placeholder for that?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have the placeholder for the resource officer. And, you know, the school hasn't officially given us word. You know, we know that there's potentially gonna be an issue this year with the special education budget, and we can put a placeholder, but we haven't, they haven't, Sandy and I meet with them regularly, and they haven't given us anything official, although we'll certainly put a placeholder and make sure we have a special town meeting. I think it may be helpful just to know what the board's direction is. You know, if, if let's say Kingston and Plimpton, or Kingston in particular does delay, is this something you foresee doing? Just because, you know, your next meeting's the 26th. Obviously, between now and the 26th is really crunch time on my end, Sandy's end, you know, for budget and the warrant. And if we, if we're gonna be looking at a potential delay, we don't want to put in all this time and effort for something that on the 26th instead of a final product, we're gonna be delaying. So you don't, I don't think you need to make the decision right now, but just, you know, what...
You want to take their temperature.
Yeah, exactly. And in particular, if, you know, the other towns do, or, right, we don't...
We're gonna see why.
Just where we are.
This is going up so fast.
The other article would be the water issues at the elementary school, to make sure that there was a article for the annual town meeting for upgrades to the water system there.
Yeah, it's one of those other things, the school, they would communicate that with us.
So, so all these issues seem to be hitting, and they're, I would say, three months behind on the budget cycle. So that, again, that's why I was asking for it, because I know how much work you guys are gonna have to do with the budget.
My inclination is not to move the town meeting. I mean, I think, that's my inclination, and I'm only speaking for myself. And it just would be, again, I don't think we should make a decision on this until the 26th. If we had to schedule another meeting before that and to handle this issue, we could always do that also. So I think we have at least a little bit of time on that. But I just, I'm not, I guess I'm not convinced at this point that even if we move this into June, that we're still gonna have good numbers. I mean, it's still a negotiation. You know, a lot of times, when you have a deadline, things get done, right? And if you extend a deadline, it just extends the time to get it done. So my inclination right now would be to not to postpone it. But I'm, again, that's just my opinion, and I just think, and I also think that we certainly need more, we certainly need to have a little bit more input from, you know, is Kingston gonna do it? If Kingston's not gonna do it, then it doesn't make any sense for us to do it. So that'd be my inclination. I don't know what the rest is.
I mean, I'd like to keep the date, but I also want to make sure we're seeing a budget that's been properly, you know, thoroughly vetted and figured out. We had, we had a couple of big things go on. We had, we redid our regional agreement, we had our finance director leave, so we had, I don't want to say a perfect storm, but we had a, this was an unusual year, to say the least. So I just want to make sure that while I wouldn't enjoy moving the meeting, I'm not gonna rule it out, just to make sure that, again, we're getting a budget that's been properly vetted.
Yeah, I'm with you guys. I mean, I don't want to move the meeting, but if we have to, I mean, I want to get the numbers correct, or as close to correct as we can, because that's gonna be an issue if we don't.
So the way it works with Silver Lake anyway, is if two of the three towns turn down their number, then like Gordon was saying, then it goes back to Silver Lake. They have 30 days to, I think it's 30 days, revise their number, bring it back to town meeting, and again, go through the whole process again. And that can keep on going until...
But then that ruins our numbers throughout the whole...
Hopefully, we'll do that, but that's how, that's how it's supposed to work on the regional end of things. Elementary school's different, that, you know, if we turn the number down, we turn the number down. You know, it could be revised, could, if we set up a second meeting after that, it could be addressed again, I guess.
So the one point on that is you've now shifted a majority of cost to Silver Lake. So you have less places to cut at the elementary school budget.
Well, the thing is, though, if special education was always a big part of the elementary school budget anyway, and if the money is just being shifted to Silver Lake, it seems to me it should be a net zero.
Well, now you, now you're picking up the cost of Plimpton and Kingston-Silver Lake, Plimpton and Kingston special needs students as well, because it's all pulled together now.
But why would it be any different than the regular assessment?
Because our percentage...
Weren't they paying theirs also?
Yeah, but the percentage of Silver Lake is now 32 and 1/2%.
Well, I mean, that goes up and down every year.
Because of, because of the reallocation is what you're saying.
No, that's the, that's the enrollment. But now you're picking up 32.5% of $10 million versus before, you're only, you're only picking up 3.6, but you had your circuit breaker number. So if you look in last year's town meeting warrant and the warrant before, I made sure that they published the amount of money that we had for circuit breaker. So basically, that's a revenue that the town has that wasn't posted before. So out of that 3.6 that we were spending, we actually were subsidizing out of circuit breaker about $800,000. So our costs were only 2.8. But Silver Lake has no circuit breaker this upcoming year. So now it's on the town's assessment to pay for that. There's shifts of buckets of money, but circuit breaker is a reimbursement, so it's always a year behind. So you're hitting increased costs, plus you don't have that money at Silver Lake. It is very complicated.
It just seems, I don't know. I guess I don't get it, because we're moving, we're, like to John's point, we're shifting over. I would think that DESI would understand that it's, I don't want to say a numbers game, but we're moving one here to there. I don't understand why we have such a dramatic increase in ways of essentially...
I agree with you.
The state should understand that we're, our numbers are our numbers, right? And if Silver Lake has it or we have it, we should still be on the hook for the, for the same amount. I don't understand why we're getting...
Where are we getting these numbers?
Where are we getting this from DESI that they don't understand what we've done?
It's not really DESI. I mean, DESI has imposed some of the reworkings of how we operate, but the numbers are, you know, Silver Lake's the one presenting the numbers.
Sure.
So where's Silver Lake getting the numbers from?
Their business manager and their staff, and that's who's working on it.
And I, and I want to say, I appreciate them working on it. You know, I know it's not an easy thing to do, so I want to appreciate their efforts, but I just want to make sure that we have a properly vetted budget.
Yeah, I would just ask if, if you are interested in having a special meeting to change, because the numbers you're basing the budget off of right now are these inflated numbers, so you're gonna have to make decisions in the town. I would give a heads up to Sandy and Cody in the finance committee, how are you leaning? Because right now, they're gonna be working like, you gotta hit the numbers coming out of the budget from Silver Lake.
Thank you.
All right, so I'll make a suggestion. You and Cody are going to this budget meeting on Thursday, and, I mean, depending on what you find out, we could schedule a meeting next week if we had to, or wait till the 26th, or wait up to the 25th, whatever is necessary. I know personally, I won't be available Tuesday and Wednesday next week.
Not Thursday, no?
So...
I'm pretty flexible.
I mean, I could do Monday, the 18th if I had, you know, if we had to, or...
So Monday wouldn't give us enough time to post the meeting?
Oh, right.
Which date was?
Or, or we just take this up on the 26th. But I think that might make most sense for you guys to have that meeting and find out.
Cody, can fill in some of the information?
You know, then if you think, if you think we need another meeting in between, you know, we'll post another meeting.
Sure.
That's a big deal.
That's a good plan.
But that way, at least, at least we're keeping a little bit of heat on this, so it doesn't like, I mean, to me, that's the thing, with budgeting in particular, if you don't keep heat on it, if you don't, you know, it always comes to the end, right? It's always the crunch time. It's like, as soon as the deadline's here, that's usually when things get done.
I do, I just think this year with our, you know, our, with Christine leaving and somebody new coming in, I feel like it's a little bit of an albatross this year.
I can see that. That's why I think, you know, I would consider it.
Yeah.
All right, so I don't know if we need a motion on that?
No, I don't think so.
We'll just take it up, if not on the 26th, then before, depending on what you guys find out.
Okay.
All right, good. So let's move on. Beth Israel Deaconess Ambulance Affiliation Agreement. We do this every year or every other year or so?
Yeah, this is with Beth Israel Deaconess in Plymouth. You approved this last year. In your packet, you'll see, we asked them to highlight any changes. There are no changes other than the dates being updated for effective April 30th of this year, and that's the only change.
Okay. And it's recommended by the police chief, I mean, the police chief right now.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we approve the Beth Israel Deaconess Ambulance Affiliation Agreement.
I'll second that.
Okay. Do we have any discussion? What's about, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. All right, next thing up, town administrator contract. We've negotiated that to essentially extend it for the next three years.
Yep.
So we have a motion from the board to enter, approve the contract for the town administrator?
I'll make a motion to approve the contract of town administrator. Cody had it.
All right, and a second? Do we have a second?
I will second it.
All those in favor, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Next, I'm gonna skip over Summit Street for a minute, because Mr. Nezarella will defer on that, so we'll do that at the end. But, let's see, the next thing up would be the annual MS Cape Cod Getaway Cycling Event. And I think, again, this is something we do pretty much every year.
It's annual. They're looking to come through town on Saturday, June 29th. And it looks like both the chiefs have reviewed this and approved the routes through town.
We just need to approve it?
Yep.
I'll move that we approve the annual MS Cape Cod Getaway Cycling Event. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Continued plan for selectmen office hours.
So, this came up as a result of the individual discussions that I've had with each of you. You, back in November of 2022, when the board was full again, you guys had implemented office hours on the off Tuesdays of your meetings. At first, there was a lot of traction, and you guys were pretty busy. It seems like in the past few months, people really haven't been coming in as much, which I think is a good sign, a testament of kind of all the work that's gone in. So, I just wanted to bring it up and see if this is something, you know, if the board wants to continue. Do you want to reduce it? Do you want to make it, you know, people can reach out and we can schedule appointments if they want to meet with you individually, whatever your thoughts are, just, it seems like, at least recently, you guys are kind of coming in and...
Trolling our thumbs.
No, I enjoy it, but, yeah, so that's the reason for it on the agenda.
What's the board's pleasure?
Well, I agree with Cody. I want to make sure that the town knows that we're available when they need us, but to his point, it's been a lot of wasted time coming into town hall and not having anybody come in. So, if we can come up with a strategy to make it more efficient, to not limit the availability, just make it more efficient availability. I'd be down with that.
So, I guess, I guess we could change it to, you know, a requested appointment, and we'll make those off Tuesdays available if no other time, you know? I mean, if anybody wants me, can find me and give me a call anyway. My number's in the book. We have phone books still. I'm not sure.
If I can answer my phone, I'll answer.
So, I'm always glad to, you know, answer, call, or an email, or arrange for meetings, so... So, maybe we'll just change it to that.
Sure, by appointment.
By appointment, so.
So, we, yeah, I mean, all of your emails are posted, but we will post something on the website that just says, you know, effective today's date, that the office hours are going to be suspended, but the selectmen are available for appointments, and we can put, you know, they can contact AMRI, and we can be in touch to find a mutual date if they don't want to reach out directly.
Yeah, and I want to stress that, again, this isn't limiting availability. It's just making, giving us a more efficient way to handle stuff.
I agree.
Yep.
Okay, good. Organizational chart?
Yes, so as part of your goals that we adopted earlier in the fiscal year, part of that was to really look at the operations within the town and organizational structure. So, what I presented is, I think, an updated organizational chart with, as far as town operations and employees. You know, I don't think you need to adopt this tonight, but I wanted to just present it as a discussion point and get your initial feedback and thoughts, and then we can make adjustments as needed, and then look to adopt something like this and some sort of policy with it at a future meeting.
So, I would just like to say that this has been a goal of mine from when I started this time around, because I thought that our organization had gotten too too spread out in too many ways, and needed to be into more of a pyramid structure, at least for what the board of selectmen's responsible for. That being said, I don't, I don't want to be in a position of anyone thinking that we're suggesting that the board abdicate any of its responsibilities. We're responsible for appoint, the people we appoint, whether it's local committees, or whether it's full-time employees, or whatever. And I think, and I intend to keep that responsibility. But, that being said, businesses of the town has grown quite a bit, and it is, in order to be done efficiently and professionally, we need a, somebody on site running the operation. And that's really why we hired Cody, at least one of the reasons why we hired Cody. So, I think, I would just like to make that point, that I think that I'm 100% in favor of something I've wanted for a while, 100% in favor of a hierarchy structure, but again, I'm not at all deferring any of our responsibilities. I am saying we can delegate to the Town Administrator to run day-to-day operations, and the chart will tell us how that's gonna work. That's my goal. And the only thing on the chart that Cody and I talked about, and we do just need to flesh this out a little bit, is the, what's it, the building maintenance?
Municipal school building.
Municipal school building maintenance director, because previously, that position had always been hired basically through the committee, the building committee, but it was a whole different type of position. Right now, it's a very responsible position. And so, I think, I think we just need to talk with the building committee and say we're gonna, we want to move it, if it agrees, we move it directly to, into the hierarchy chain, where they report up to the Town Administrator, as opposed to, in years past, they always used to report to the chairman of building committee, a long time ago.
Sure.
But that position has changed so much now. He oversees the staff, he, you know, he does the maintenance. He doesn't just do, like, empty the trash cans and so on like they did in the beginning, so. That's my own two cents.
No, I think you said it perfectly. I don't think we're looking to, you know, have our responsibilities usurped, but to your point, you know, our Town Administrator's here full-time, you know, and we're here as much as we can, but, you know, you never know what new board's coming in, you never know what's gonna happen. So, you want to make sure that you have somebody minding the store, with the, minding the store with the ideals and the goals of the selectmen in mind. So, I think, I think that's what this, this hierarchy does here, this, I shouldn't call it hierarchy, but this structure here does. So, it makes, it makes sense to me.
I'm with both of you guys. Again, like both, they've said, we're not here every day, day-to-day operations. Town Administrator is, and, you know, he speaks to us about everything. It's not that we don't have, you know, contacts to get in hold of us and everything, but he sees day-to-day operations where we're here a few times, and we try to get here as much as we can, but we're not here as 24/7 as he is, where you can reach us all the time. So, in that aspect, I like the chart, and I think it will work in the way it should. That's my two cents.
Good, so take it up as a formal vote?
Yeah, future meeting.
All right, Morse Brothers?
That one, I think Najah usually doesn't take part in, so we can move that one with Summit Street.
Okay.
Najah hasn't taken part in Morse Brothers' stuff?
Oh, I'm sorry. That's my mistake, okay.
Put that one...
We'll put that...
Yeah, I gotta move the two things.
Yep, I bowled it. I wasn't thinking. Okay, updates on the MBTA and training?
Yeah, so we're making steady progress with the MBTA Action Plan. The zoning bylaw review committee voted formally last night to, for us to submit a preliminary application to the state to see if what we're thinking, at least, would meet the state's compliance. So, I'm working on that. Hope to have that submitted this week, and then we should hear back with, hear back from them within a month or so. And then at that point, we can start kind of the PR aspect of it, and just get the information out there so everybody understands it, and then, again, look to probably do some sort of special town meeting in the fall to put it up for the town to decide if this is something we want to move forward, but...
Our goal from that committee is to get the entire zoning bylaw in that special town meeting as soon as we can finish the work we started. We've done a lot of work, but, so that'll be all.
Can I ask, as a dovetail, in the last meeting, we voted to send a letter to our state reps. Are we still planning on doing that as well?
Yeah, I have that pretty much drafted, and we'll get that off sometime this week.
Thank you.
All right, any more updates from the Town Administrator?
So, we have our new assistant town accountant starting next week, which will be great to help out our accounting office. We have scheduled a date at the end of this month for the interview team for the town accountant to start reviewing those resumes and figure out who we want to bring in for initial interviews, so that'll be good. Our new energy manager consultant, who you guys awarded the contract to, Kathy Stanley, has really hit the ground running. She's already contracted a lower electricity rate for the town municipal buildings, so she's saving us about five or 4.5 cents per kilowatt hour, which, if you look at our electric usage over the past year, will save the town about $40,000 a year. She's been working with that. She's also brought in an engineering firm to look at what projects we want to do for a green communities grant. She started preparing that green communities grant in the amount of $200,000 that will get off sometime in early April. And we should usually do pretty well with those, so hopefully we'll get that award. And just continuing to recruit for open positions, our conservation agent and admin, we did post the agent. We posted it in a flexible format where, you know, we may look to employ somebody up to 32 hours a week. If we are not able to fill the admin, it may be a little bit more attractive for a candidate if there's, you know, additional hours. So, we've posted that, and we're still recruiting for the town accountant. And, yeah, that's pretty much it, just preparing for town meeting.
Okay, so I guess the only left is the Summit Street and the Morse Brothers?
You're gonna recuse yourself?
So, the letter on Summit Street?
Yeah, so...
We have it here.
So, at your last meeting, Mr. Nezarella had come in asking for a letter in response to his Department of Energy Resources opinion. The board had requested that we draft a, or that I draft a letter basically just with the factual information. So, I've sent that off to you. I think it's factual. That's pretty much all it is, but I just, you know, wanted your thoughts. If there's anything you'd like to see different, if you want us to send this. Again, just for a discussion point, wanted to present this to you as you requested.
I think it captures everything that we talked about. He asked, he said it's been agricultural, it is, and that it's still under 61A.
It's not, they, 61A ended in, let's see, 2016.
Oh, okay.
So, through 2016, the property had been classified as an agricultural property or under 61A. They did not apply for the renewal in 2016, so they didn't technically withdraw it. They just never applied for a renewal. And then, so it hasn't been technically under 61A, receiving that exemption since 2016.
Billy, correct me if I'm wrong, but the idea was he didn't do the 61A because he was starting the ball on a, on the solar field at that point?
Yeah, so you'll...
So, that's why it wasn't?
Exactly. So, in December of 2015, the Halifax Planning Board voted to approve the petition for the solar array. So, then that next year, the owner didn't apply for the exemption.
Because the assumption it was.
Exactly.
Okay, well, that's what it is, that's what it is.
Yeah, no, I think you did a good job of stating the facts. You know, it's no gray area. It's cut and dry as to the history of that property, so I'd be okay with sending that letter.
Okay, you need a motion for that, I think?
I think so, yeah.
So, take that as a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion to send the letter from Cody Haddad, on speaking on behalf of board of selectmen, regarding the property at 69 Summit Street.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Okay. Morse Brothers' compliance with the earth removal permit. I know there was some complaints about that, and you took some actions.
Yeah, so we did receive a complaint that there was a truck down Lincoln Street at 8:04 in the morning. The trucks aren't supposed to be there between 8:00 and 8:15 per the permit, as that's when the school buses are going. As soon as we were notified of it in official capacity, I reached out to representation from Morse Brothers, their attorney, notified just as a reminder. You know, this is typical process we do, you know, with people in town, any business or resident, if there's potential violation, usually send them a little reminder. So, I reminded him of the permit compliance requirements, and you can see I attached that email on a, the response that, you know, they take it seriously, and they're gonna investigate, they investigated it, they're investigating it. So, I just wanted to bring it forward to the board to see what you wanted to do, and also just a reminder to the public that if there is any issues with Morse or anything else, to notify us in official capacity. If it's posted to Facebook, that, you know, we're not monitoring Facebook. So, if there is a concern, you know, contact the office, email one of us, call us, so we can address it.
I don't think we've had any other complaints other than that more.
Yeah, again, make it, make it official, you know, bring it to the, bring it to the select board officially, and we can, we can look at things.
This is the only complaint that I've gotten in regards to compliance with the permit, and I just wanted to bring it forward to, you know, see if...
Jeremy's got a question?
Jeremy, come on up. There you go.
Jeremy, let's be non-respute. Anybody with two eyes and a semi-functioning neural network can go out there and look at the new lake that's formed where a hill used to be. And I'd advise the board of selectmen to schedule this on their calendar, to go out there and take a look at the new lake, because you don't get a lake sitting on top of sand unless you're in the water table. There's a new lake out there where a hill used to be. They're digging below the water table. That's a fact. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Well, we do have the ability to send our engineer out, so...
Yeah, if you'd like, we can absolutely have our engineer go and take a look.
Go have, take a look.
I think, I'd be down with that. I think we should have, given the complaint, I think we should have our engineer take a look at the property.
I mean, I'll also point out that it's rained an awful lot in the last...
It has, yeah.
...few months, so I think there's water more places than we're used to seeing it.
Sure.
Well, I don't know. Maybe, maybe he's right.
Okay, I will contact Pat Brennan and ask if he can, um, schedule a little safe visit.
All right, anything else to us come before the board?
No, not that I know of.
Think so, all right. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I will second that motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? What?
We okay, John?
He wants to know if Najah wants to come up to vote to adjourn.
No, Najah reclusive himself. He's, he's in the back.
That's it, he's in timeout. He's in timeout.
Anyway, we have a majority vote here, so we all vote yes?
Yes.
And so, we're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.